I believe in the flag of the United States of America, the United, free, public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is my last regular day as president, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone. I started in this position six years ago, and within two months we went into pandemic. So it's been a little while by. I've missed quite a few meetings here to implement changes. Took the job about a year ago, and within four months they assigned me to one of the major projects in the corporation, which I know you've worked on, you know, as a mayor. So that also interfered with my ability either, which is why tonight, when you speak out, you will not see my name anywhere. I'm going to step out of board position, but I'm still getting around. I'm committed to helping out on certain projects to build the organization out of war. And I have you as president, and a lot of new things going on this coming year. But I just wanted to make sure we did tonight, just in time off of work, because I want to thank everyone for everything you've done. We went through two years of pandemic, and you all stayed with us and participated in events that we put on. Like the drivers who drive, all these things, you've supported all the initiatives that the OAK stations put on, even our street fair, you've come to the fireworks watching, and you've just helped for Miramexa, which has my company, is one of the best communities in the city. We are just amazing. I came here 17 years ago now, and so I will not be leaving. I would be helping out quietly in the background. But I wanted to come for the final evening, because it's a celebration party. We all come to celebrate the year. And just to say thank you for everything, and I'm wishing for staying with the next board of rings. Mike, can we have a hug? Yeah, who's here tonight who will be observing the meeting?
Yeah, Michael.
Okay, and their adult leader is Shu Padioka?
Right, he's not a leader of their group, but he's the leader of cat bubble, he's in the group.
Yeah, so twelve of them, Picho, Padioka, Ethan Teener, Paul Gardner Milner, and Greg O'Moros. So welcome, glad to have you. Also, for tonight, first, we're going to go with our first responders, San Diego Police Department, Northeastern Division.
Good evening, everybody. I'm fighting officer Henry Picas. I'm with the New York City Division of Northeastern Division. I serve as a very nice officer of our hands, just so I'll take care for our stats. Citywide, crimes against persons, we're down 10%, crime against property, we're down 17%, crime against society, we're up 7%. Up in 17%, that's more of a proactive activity from these parties going out there. Certain vice of the party, they're not there, there's all the kinds of stuff. But I think here in Miramexa, we're down a lot, okay? So crimes against persons, we're down 60%, crimes against property, we're down 50%, society, we're up 27%. And I know last time we asked for numbers, so year to date, crimes against persons, there's about 231 radio calls that we've experienced so far. Crimes against persons, crimes against property, 791, and society, over 100, as well. Overall, that's awesome for Miramexa. Like Barry said, this is a big community. Part of the reason why our fight is down is because of you guys calling this in, calling using the radio calls, getting our officer out there to make contact with whoever's in the conversation. Daylight savings, obviously it's getting dark sooner. People after each other, if something's suspicious, you know, if you think it's an emergency, call 911. Let the dispatcher be around you if it's not an emergency, if they say that they will. There's no priority, this happening, we'll put that on the board, but an officer, you know, there's going to wait a little longer. If you know that it's not an emergency, just call the non-emergency number, and then it'll still be on the board, officers will still be out there, but it's just not a priority at that time.
What was that phone number again, on emergency? Oh, you're in Miramexa, so I hate finding.
We have our NPD team, our RCPs that are helping out with our project. Get it done app, it's when you guys call in and say there's a cap in the cabinet somewhere, you send it down to get it done, it's online, get it done. There's four officers that they're part of the working division and then city. Then CP, one of the business divisions in the city of San Diego, so it's part of the four officers up here. But get it done with the RCPs, they go by location, and they're still in cabinet, they do that for me. I send that down to NPD, and then they send it to me, and we figure it out. I know it's a hassle. A lot of people have filled out several reports to get it done, but there's a process that we have to follow. But I'll tell you this, when they do get it, they get it from you to walk a lot faster. Yes.
Is the non-emergency, is the 888 number known on the service?
Well, 888, is this 520,000 still?
No, I think 584843154.
So that's the.
Northeastern Division.
That's Northeastern Division, okay. So the 619520,000, that's pretty good for the whole city. Yes.
911, does that go to directly to you, or is that a central where it's right about the trouble is for order?
It depends. So if it comes from a cell phone, it's going to go to Sage Peters.
Okay, I got the problem.
Yes, Sage Peters will get it when they send, sorry, this guy, he says that one. If it's coming from a landline, that goes directly to our dispatch.
I think next time, I'm just going to say, you can have it the same way that we do.
Well, we can still, even if you call 911, it's still going to get to you. And there was a final way there in this, it's a non-emergency, it's also the same, there's a picture like that. So, my speaking, how are you called? Any other questions?
Yeah, how come there's a South Beach issue? Why can't you get enough funding? Is that a problem?
Well, not this time, yes, okay.
I mean, I wish we could, that's not a team. I have no reason to do the crap. All right, thank you, everybody.
All right, another one here tonight, San Diego Fire Department. Okay, here we go. We're move on to our featured speaker tonight, California State Executive members, first of all.
Thanks to the best in board, we're all happy to hear you being here, Miramexa. Like a lot of many of you, I'm still a bit of a time taker, a little bit coming up on my bedtime, so I'm really grateful. I'm back to this community, this is the time of the year that I'm not at the state Capitol exactly, I'm like listening here from up there for our meeting tonight. You know, the offer had, like Harold, he's been able to view what he saw. But in this September, until January, we've got a reset, so we're circulating our district, and getting out to our street videos. I was hearing your reset a couple of weeks ago, visiting the town councils, community councils, association, getting a little bit of nothing, and really spending a little bit more time here, some of your primary issues, and feedback, because that's going to shape up what I want to be able to work on in our communities that happened in back in January. Obviously, I apologize without saying, we're looking at a very interesting, very active time right now. So certainly a lot of activity happening out of our state Capitol, and be able to work on issues of affordability, to be able to respond and protect California's interests, whether any threats are coming at us, and a variety of issues. I've been able to slowly be able to work on a couple of bills that didn't make the governor's name for his signature. One thing I think probably the one I'm most proud about is really comes from a lot of people that are really trying to work on some of their own individual housing projects, and they have a remodel, they want to redo something really small scale local. But you are trying to engage cities, and cities can take now six, nine, 12 months to issue that building for you. And it's a status quo, you know, you need your architect, you get your structural engineer, and you get everything down, and you wait for that building permit review, but we actually kind of cadre of private professionals that are certified in plan checks. Many cities actually don't use that, and so we have a bill, maybe two to three, with the governor's sign, which will allow you as a homeowner, with property in there, to go directly to these private plan checkers, be able to run that check against the local ordinance or the state building codes, and send that report to the city. And then they would have a 14-day shot clock, and you can see if you're building permit, so you can have those. No more waiting nine months to get your permit from the city. So again, try to get things out a little bit faster, because time is money. Another area sort of in the housing space, this one actually threads very well with those with environmental considerations, is a bill that is now signed, that's going to direct the California Energy Commission. So look at something as alternative to Title 24. Title 24 is a longstanding building code section that governs your energy efficiency codes for your buildings. Very expensive mandates are built in there, but we're finding from architects and professionals that there's a new concept out there called passive house construction. Really just the concept, asking what materials you can use, how you envelope that house. And turns out, not just for energy efficiency, which really has a lot of savings on the homeowner, but also for wildfire resilience, because we saw with the Allstate episode we had earlier in January in Los Angeles, this newer construction that actually was some of the buildings that actually withstood the devastation, like the homes around that actual fire that were down. So asking the Energy Commission, look at this, if you're trying to do it in Title 24, because that's so expensive, when you're trying to build a home, and look at a way to be able to do something cheaper, but also have something more energy efficient for gas savings, and hydro home fire department as well. We've got some other bills that we're going to go through these prior lists, and we're working on your health data privacy, to make sure that your information is better protected from outside actors, but not affiliated with governors. Now, there's some work that I was doing that we call a two-year bill, it's in the middle of a two-year session. Is that any more work? And all, and most of these are actually in the technology and privacy space. This is a growing area, as a policy peak, it's somebody that enjoys really trying to think through, have really good legislation, trying to work against some of the big tech interests and everything. In a way, it's been fascinating, but also it's real time, it's really important, because we don't even know sometimes, we know that they're just neighbors and citizens, how much of our privacy we're giving up. And we're incorporating technology into our lives, and more of that technology, it's innovative, it's creative, you know, allows you to be able to do things a little easier, a little bit faster, staying connected. But sometimes you don't even know what's going on, you have a cell phone, or with your computer at home. So for example, one thing that was discovered recently is that it's going to be a growing trend for larger businesses, corporations, to personalize a price for what you pay for some of their services. So if you go to this website, and you're looking at what's expected for you, it would cost you, you think, oh, it's $100, everyone needs $100. And not, they can't even say one more. What you're doing is you're looking at a lot of the information on your phone, and it's almost starting to use some of these algorithms, some of these data sets, to understand who you are as a consumer, the profile you might fit, and then decide, makes assumptions on what you're willing to pay based on that profile. And I find this, one, incredibly invasive of our privacy, and two, also incredibly offensive, because we shouldn't be paying anymore for anything at all, but much less based on who we are. Because we live in San Diego, which has higher area median income, we all average, make a little bit more money than St. Phoenix. You might be more for that hotel room across the country than somebody logging on a computer from Phoenix, because they assume you have a little bit more money, you're able to pay a little bit more. And so, we actually turned off some work that SDC, that's right, FTC in Washington was doing until the administration changed in January. I was speaking a little federally, because I think that this would be a standard across the country. States can step up, and we can actually set up our own rules, and we were one of five states that tried legislation that was guarding against what we're calling surveillance pricing, surveilling your information, and setting individualized customized price based on who you are. That needs a lot more work, a lot of the technical details have kind of got to slow down, so I'm going to resume that in January. Another area is to try to protect or re-shield location information. And so, when you think about, again, we're all walking around with that phone in our pocket, all those little paintings that are coming up, that are attached to some of your apps, that are attached to the basic software in your phone, a lot of that can be repackaged and sold to category of businesses called large lead growthers. They can start to actually get a profile of where you're going, how often you go, when you go to Starbucks, how often you go to drop your kids off at school, whatever it is, we just don't like that big brother attitude. Anybody having access to our information, and knowing of just how it's now, whereabouts, like a little bit of privacy, a little bit of freedom in our daily movements, and so the ability for our state to possibly try to prevent the sale of that information, I mean, you don't even realize what's going on, I think is essential, just to be able to protect our privacy without completely to enjoy the information that come with, you know, smartphones.
So those are.
So that is a related different issue. So automated license plate readers is also something that's been really talked about. Somebody else would run a bill that the governor did from this year. Because, yeah, so there's a lot of cameras out there, there's a lot going on, and making sure that your information is protected, so they can't really see, like, nobody can just get, get, get a hold of that information, and maybe you'll understand where your towers are, where you're going. That is absolutely essential. Where we're having a challenge, and I think it's a very good one, a very good challenge to be able to score, is how sometimes the bill that somebody authored, called the governor's desk, how that could intersect with law enforcement's ability to actually get useful information that helps solve a crime, which we also want to have happen. So part of it was, how long can these data companies that actually own these systems, how long can they store the data? How do they transfer the data? How do they secure the data? All of your righteous conversations in making sure that bad activities absolutely have those guardrails, but things that we want to use that information for, that that is something that doesn't throw the baby out of the bath. So that probably is going to be, maybe we'll work on again next year, try to get it right. So generally, you know, some of the issues that are going on there, obviously on energy costs. We have a big bill last game of the session right now, that's going to try to work on some of the parameters that, usually the PUC governs, that we want legislative direction to the PUC, on how we're going to try to, or work on just at least stabilizing, not being those right now, some of the energy costs that are driving the screen. And then also working on what's called statewide wildfire relief funds, essentially. That was a big loss, because major events we had in Los Angeles. We want to make sure that our communities are protected, that these formal events happen, that we get out of control, that they can have recourse to be able to access some of this assistance as well. And so, we got that. There's another issue related, unrelated, that made a deal that we got to hang on, called the cabin trade system, which, I'll generalize it, cabin trade has been around for a little while, but essentially, large polluting corporations sort of have a market, it's a market for credits, for how much carbon emissions they can have, and if they are polluting more than some of the concierge owners, sort of trying to keep the level of carbon emissions at an appropriate level here in California, they would have to pay into this fund. That fund then can actually come back to community projects that we can use to help improve our environment, to help mitigate for some of the, for some of those carbon emission impacts globally. And so, that was about to expire in 2027. We got ahead of the game and tried to make sure that we were adjusting some of that formula based on the experience of the last decade to further the energy of our community, so we can expect, again, these are private dollars that will come back into community for community projects. And I'll try to close the mission about the state's budget, because that's something a little while ago. We usually have to pass our state budget by June 15th. It was a contraction year, our overall total revenues were down a little bit, but our guiding values are to make sure that those core programs and services, that social safety net is there, that we're protecting public safety, that we're funding our schools, the A-12 schools and higher education. So we were generally able to try to sustain last year's level of funding to make sure that all of these important public services and programs and the essentials were kept whole. So a very, very busy year, but of course, we're always also watching a lot of the, I'm going to try and say this kind of non-partisan, a lot of the challenges coming out of Washington DC that were specifically, sometimes specifically threatening California. Whether that was withholding a lot of money, billions of dollars, of healthcare dollars, education dollars, that we were using tools that aren't at our disposal, whether it was legal strategies, suing the courts, whether it was power balancing, other priorities, recently we heard about SNAP funding, right? Who seems that a lot of our homeowners and neighbors in need, California stepped up, and we were able to make sure that we were going to be able to support about $8 billion out of state support, to be able to weather through this period until Congress gets together and actually passes their activities and reopens the government. So these are the kinds of things that we're always sort of pivoting forward to, and having to monitor, to make sure that we're doing all of what we can to, as a state, to try to sustain the basics that we all expected, are expecting out of your board. So that's kind of long and short. I welcome some questions that you all have. But I'm here in the community until January, and then we're right back to the state Capitol. Like I said, it's an act of time, it's a privilege to be in this role, to be able to serve this community. But of course, at any end that you have, we have until mid-February to introduce the next slate of bills and legislation we work on next year, so I've got a lot of good ideas that are already coming out from neighbors, and I welcome any of yours. And if you think of something out of the back, you can also always reach out to me in my office, Michael Bravo, who's my client last year for the Miramexa community amongst others. And I'm just grateful for a little time to see you back with the top pencil. Thank you.
What's happening with consumer rebates for incentives for solar power? These used to be really great, and I want to help you do it on the saving, but it seems that gives you the wrong, the incentive to do this financially.
Yeah, the incentives for us to be able to, you know, go, to be able to get more renewable solar, right? You don't already have a system right now. So the PUC has been governing a lot of the incentives and rebates, how much you would get back in credits for installing a new solar system that comes against a credit for your energy bill that's reaching you. And so, go back a decade ago, these incentives were really, really high, early shimmers, and they were great, and they actually helped a lot of San Diego companies grow, right? It was a big win for businesses and for consumers right now. And then there was a second and a third generation of readjusting the math, and sort of hope was fair, well penciled out. And so, I was very, I was very disappointed, I committed to the PUC, the previous generation, absolutely a lot of the benefits that you've got. And I guess the frustrating thing, what frustrated me, how I was looking at a solar system, is that you're making this big investment, probably to $30,000 on average for a new system on rooftop, and you're producing those electrons, you're making energy, you're putting that energy back on the grid, they're benefiting from it, right? And so, especially if you're coming out to that initiative, because again, you don't have to put that big company in there. And that's a major investment right now, and I want to make sure people, consumers are getting back their share. So there have been some, there have been some iterations of us trying to be able to direct better the PUC on what we want to see out of that. I think this is going to be something that's going to continue to be a five priority for the legislature, specifically. Was working, I had a bill that was passed a couple of years ago for community solar. So about half of Californians really can't take advantage of rooftop solar, because they own their home, or they live in a multi-family housing unit, right? So that takes everybody, you bring HOA, or just be on the conducive, right? About half of the people really can't take advantage of a rooftop solar system, and you get those kinds of credits. So community solar is an answer for them, because it kind of works, I mean, generalized, like a community park, if you can find a place of length, if you can find some land, if you can find some other states to be able to create that system, if you want to co-opt it, and all coming together, and sort of co-home that system, you should be able to tie it to grid, and we will see some of the same benefits, just like a homeowner with rooftop solar. So that's great. So we created a program, and it's off of the PUC, you hear that, but we guess the PUC, it messed up in that. And so that this was economically not worth to be able to lightly close investments in the system. So I have another bill that we put into motion this year, that's going to need more work, to better direct them about these parameters, that what does and doesn't go into that math. Yeah, one more. I saw a hand over here. Yes?
I had a question, you mentioned at the beginning about homeowners and permitting, but we have a little dog restaurant that has just been sitting there, it's built in for 11 years. What's the story with business permitting? Why is that?
Yeah, the, so I was really focused, it wasn't the last year that was much more broad, to be able to streamline a lot of this permitting, and somebody else was working on that one, that, I was really trying to focus on some residential, some smaller projects, right? Because so much of it gets backed up at city hall, and I wanted to have a relief out for people that are trying to get their home remodeled, or have something happening a little bit faster. So as a pilot of a test case, there was a bill this year on businesses, I'll have to get back to you. It had to do, I'm forgetting, I think you left two thousand dollars in there for regulars. But, yeah, this one has to do with, I think, trying to streamline some of the, some of the, some of the construction standards and everything that are going in specifically in restaurants, but if you want to leave here and go, I'll come back in, we can get that.
We're going to have office stalls that show.
We sure can.
So is there an actual fee to give the price for whatever?
So that would come, yes, that would come to you, if you want that expedite that concierge service, yes, it's like basically having like another professional out there. I'm sure that would be probably, you know, $1,500. It's not much to find, right? Especially on simple, you know, a single home, that's a pretty simple checklist of things. But that's something that, you know, more time is money, if you want to be that premium, this should allow you to bypass it.
Regarding the PUC, do we have any say in who gets appointed, or is it just the governor?
No, the governor has five appointments, and he's setting him up. So, yeah.
Is the mission of the PUC to protect the consumers? Because it doesn't seem like they're really doing that, it's more so they are appointed from like former executives of, you know, these energy companies. So how, just trying to figure out a lot of.
We agree, their mission is to protect consumers, there is a deep mystery, some of them bounce in and out, like the industry sector, like jobs. There is a separate position up there, who is not one of the five commissioners, but is another sort of entitled position called the public advocate. And that's the person who's really charged with, like, you know, specifically looking and providing information to those commissioners about the consumer's perspective. We are always thinking about ways to be able to improve confidence in the PUC, because the legislature is losing a lot of confidence as well.
Is there a way to get these private companies public again, so that we don't have to worry about, you know, profits and all that record-breaking profits?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's a long way to go, it's about whether or not we're going to disapply it, right? Or to move systems over to the public sector, and, you know, Los Angeles, Sacramento, a couple of other smaller jurisdictions still have public power, and always did. That was a beast, right? You know, I wouldn't remind you, when I was on city council about eight years ago, we looked at that, and we were looking at the SCK, what do they call it, the, pretty interesting. And part of that conversation was an open-ended interest in looking at what would take a shift to a municipal utility over a certain period of time, and it's not, it's expensive. You've got to buy out all the distribution, and then you have that confidence in your city to actually run the utility. And so, that is something that I think is always on the table for discussions. But we also are looking, one thing that comes up is whether or not we, and this came up actually in the bill this year, when we were looking at the wildfire relief fund, is trying to prioritize spending from shareholder profits before any ratepayer fund access for some of these various things in the project. So that's some things that we can legislate, and we like to do more of that, is to make sure that, again, as a privately owned industry, there is going to be a shareholder component of that, but we can't let the rocks lie, right? We have to make sure that we're directing the PUC better, or looking the other way, to sort of bring in, like, sort of what was passed for me.
Well, on the water issue, like, you know, if you're worried about the water issue, you know, the Indians, we need that water, and we need water, like, you know, what water are you doing on?
Well, so we have a state water plan, and your major sources are up north, northern Sacramento, and the state system is in the. the state system is in the Sierra Valley, and Colorado River. And the state project flows through metropolitan and covers all of Southern California. And we also have our direct allocations that we are entitled to from San Diego, San Diego County, from Colorado River. Now, you can have all the paper guarantees that you want. If the water supply was low, if the Colorado River really comes all the way down, we're in big trouble. We're going to have to take some serious conservation efforts. But what we're trying to do right now is sort of look at that state water plan right now. I think the Colorado River, it's a multi-state agreement, seven states that are involved. So it's really up here at federal level. That's up for renewal in 2027, which there is only yet, which isn't that again, right? And so that, we've got appointees that are, you know, full-time working on that math and that part of the plan. And then really, we are trying, you know, to get off of the state water project. We need it there for redundancy eventually. But the more we're doing for local sources, and that includes your groundwater, which I know has been very disruptive, could be, you know, sort of tearing up roads. But, you know, that's something that really will come to provide for 50% of our city's municipal supply. But that's for thinking and providing escape and security that we often rely on waterway resources, which have been more expensive over time too.
Well, can we take some water from all of our mountains and include snow and bill or alcohol?
So there is more, there are more service dams in planning right now. There's one famously called the site reservoir, which will be one of the larger ones in the systems. But that is actually about to start construction. It's been under better permitting for a little while. And you don't want to overbuild because then we're all paying too much to back, right? So we're trying to balance everything and get it just right. Supply will be there, but we have the high floors right there.
And y'all are at San Jose State. As we drive up to San Jose and we drive through the farms and see a lot of the hordes and how the water they converted from our farms to the ocean, what?
Take the break us off a little bit because there is a, there's a whole federal water system that the state doesn't actually control. And so we also saw those hordes, that many people have seen this and other things like that. Right, exactly. A lot of that is like federal, federal control. You're driving up there south of the delta, right? That's all coming here from like Acre Steel area and those foot hills and it runs northward. And so a lot of that, a couple of things. One, I'm sorry, a lot of those farmers have exhausted their groundwater. It is siding. There's areas of land that drop more than 30 feet. They are, they have, we've just been using more than we're naturally able to sustain and replenish. So we're trying, so, and they want, they want more. So there has been more projects that have been under construction right now federally with the San Joaquin Valley portion of it. Northern California water, which comes through the delta, pumps it out to the aqueduct and the area where we shoot it down to Los Angeles. So that gets into that battle of how much needs to get out to the ocean? What happens to a lot of the environmental considerations up there? Surface species, the wetlands, and yeah, agriculture in the delta as well too. And having that right balance that we call it, you know, the employable goals ecological balance as well as the water supply that we also want to use for our drinking and for our resources and for agriculture, that's a tricky math there for keeping that delta in balance. If we don't get that out into the delta, then the delta ecosystem will really crash. That affects a lot of things too, and you're trying to keep these things in balance efficiently. Thank you.
All right, back to back that are related, so I'm going to take this off. But they're Miramesa community champions on their plans to bring Miramesa local divide away. And they're off.
Hello, Jane. This is Jane Brock. Hi, Susan. Miramesa residents in 2018. I think, which is important because I remember what Miramesa, Fourth of July, this city. My first year with the kids, there was the breakfast and the parade and the community day and then the fireworks and all that stuff. And I live in a spot where they were so fortunate to watch the fireworks in my backyard. Super cool. And I remember that high school. And the last change in the last few years, of course. And I remember seeing a very, I remember a couple of years ago we had some dunes to try to ride the parade and I'm like, I'm sort of like, started spinning our wheels and like trying to get things going and it just like kind of never gave me momentum. And I think this year, I don't even remember how it happened, but a couple of us kind of got together and we were like, maybe next year there's going to be fireworks and all these other things happening. Maybe it's still great if it kind of happened again. So we got together, we kind of set up a plan. And there was a permit that went into the city for a little less permit for the Fourth of July. And I tell the story too because I think it's important for the community to know the background a little bit. So we put the permit in and we were not, we were told that there were not enough resources for the day, given the street blockages and the police needed to move. So there was also a request for public records that was put into the city. I don't remember. So there was a request for information that was put into the city. And so we kind of simultaneously found out that only one permit for the Fourth of July had been submitted to the city. So we were very confused about why, if there was only one permit and it needed to be the one for Miramesa for the Fourth of July, two weeks, why would we have it? Why, how were there no resources if nobody else was using those resources? So we were able enough along with the city and kind of found out that historically, there are a number of communities, La Jolla, Spruce Ranch, maybe more to others, historically that have parades. And since we have had parades since 2019, we have fallen off of that list. And so we were able to argue that this is wildly inequitable. If these resources aren't yet allocated, then we should be with us. And while they didn't necessarily, well, I think they took our point because we then were able to have a meeting and discuss what might happen. So knowing that the Fourth of July is huge across the city and knowing that our police are needed for lots of different things on the Fourth of July and all the days at the beaches or in other communities and those kinds of things. The city and the police department were interested in coming together with us to discuss how volunteers, along with American traffic education plan and other planners, street workers and so on and so forth, along with not utilizing the main thoroughfares of the community so that he's not, you know, based in the ballpark, right? But how we could potentially come up with an alternative parade group that might be acceptable to the city. So at this point, we are moving forward adapting our permit. And they've given us the like yellow light, I would say. So we'll get Weston Hill from Erickson Elementary at this Mesa Verde Park down toward Miramesa Boulevard, but it's not just before the Boulevard. So the street is kind of wide enough, there's lots of room for pedestrians and people to walk or kind of parade to go down the road and that sort of thing. And it's also sort of still central to Miramesa, central-ish, so that it feels like it's, you know, part of the solar community. So we are working now with getting approvals for blocking off, I think, about like 13 or 14 side streets. What that would look like, we are going to need as a community to find the blockade and things like that. So if you were around last weekend and saw Marotta Road was blocked up for the Vanderview, it would be something like that, with the blockade, sort of road closure signs and those kinds of things. All of that equipment would have to be rented from an outside company. And then the city would also send like a police officer in the morning to make sure that any cars that need to be towed off the roof will hold them in that sort of thing. But this would be done with very little sort of police presence. And instead, we'd be community volunteers ensuring that the streets are blocked off, that the parade group is good to go. And then, you know, all of those other parameters, some sort of meeting bathrooms and governments and all of that stuff. But we were really happy to hear that the city was willing to sort of work with us. And, but I do think it's important for the community to know that they initially were just like, nope, these other places have priority, which I just think our community deserves equal priority as well as every other community in our entire city. So it's definitely important to help the community. But we're really excited to move forward with the parade. I think it will be at approximately 11:00. I think that's normally historically when it's been, like after Spruce Ranch, so the politicians are never leaving from over and do our parade. And especially with the construction around the Miramesa Senior Center and the upper center and then the pool, that's also supposed to be finished. We were kind of like, oh, we're going to just do this big thing. It's not probably from my understanding, they'll be ready by the Fourth of July. It'll probably be a little later in 2026. But there'll still be an opportunity at the senior center to have a bit of a community event. And I believe, you know, we'll see where it lands with the fireworks and then community day for that portion of the day. But I think that's kind of the plan at the moment. So we're super excited to kind of relaunch that. I think it's, you know, it was one of my, I'm here Monday weekend. And so it was only a month or two later that, you know, I experienced the Fourth of July parade. And I was like, wow, look at this amazing community, all these people. And the kids kind of laughed and all that stuff. But I think, you know, from that community's perspective, we're really excited to do that. And maybe it really comes down.
I have a question, Tom, because I have a little bit of a career for the Fourth of July celebration here. Is almost creating on the same day as the Fourth of July fireworks? Because it's my understanding that fireworks happened like the day before the Fourth of July because they were so expensive if you want the hierarchy to be on the court.
Do you, a real kind of that, that went on for years? Started with making breakfast at the senior center or the center coming back before. And then you would have parade 11:00. You would have a fun day at the park that opened about the same time and stayed until 9:00 PM. And at that time, the fireworks were allowed at Miramesa High School. So everybody would stay at the park until 9:00, watch the fireworks. And this all together, the fireworks were not, there was no charge at that time like they're doing now, which makes fireworks having to deal with. Where all you wanted, you went on the court, that's an extra 10, 15, 10. There was not any of that going on. It was base prices, it didn't go up a whole lot. Cocaine shut everything down, things began to fall apart. Fireworks tried to come back. That's when time out, but construction was done at a school during the COVID shutdown. Now we need an implosion of fireworks. So that's when they had to move. And then when they moved, that's when the charges were starting to happen. And they had to do the third, just right late. Barely, as a community, every year raise enough for the base price. We can't do that extra 10 or 15 to go the next day and say this is more than charge. So, and that's why Amanda's trying to get something new going.
The reason I was asking is because you're going through all this trouble to do the parade on the Fourth of July and it doesn't, the Fourth of July committee can't do it on the Fourth of July. Does that swing me up a bit?
Not, definitely not this year. This is a restart, it's relaunching and it's partnering and working together to bring it back. It's confused a lot of people that the parade is now being planned on July 4th. The fireworks are still a question mark as to whether it will be the night of July 3rd or the night of July 4th. You'll hear from Michael Spencer and all that about strip space and fireworks plans. You'll hear from Jeff Stevens about what Miramesa County Council is doing as a watch party, Independence Day, community celebration that will be whenever the fireworks is. So Amanda's challenge has been how to bring back parade, not knowing for sure what fireworks is going to be. Fireworks' challenge has been to encourage a parade because for Miramesa, trying to do it a couple of years ago, there were people who were interested in being in a parade. Nobody interested in organizing a parade.
I think what's really important too is to frame this as a lot of parade opportunities for the community. You know, the fireworks are on the evening of the 3rd. People aren't going to be working on the court. They're going to like, you know, like enjoy the fireworks and then the next morning come the parade. And so if it's two separate celebration, like, that sounds like a lot of fun. But it's going to help us, you know, and not be overwhelmed by all these things in one day. So we'll just see what happens.
I know you need to leave in a moment. I have a comment for Terry and so like that.
Oh, I just wanted to say I'm very excited that there are some people that take this on. I think what people don't realize is all these things, the fireworks, the parade, the street fair, all of those events are organic from our community. And the parade didn't just happen. Different people busted their butts to make it happen. And it kind of died because people didn't want to step up and do work. So if you know people that want to step up and do the work, encourage them because she needs help. I know you. I don't know you. I just know the more people die, the better it is and he should put on a parade. So thank you so much for leading that charge. Because I loved the parade and I was devastated over the thought. And I used to be one of the announcers, so I'm happy to do that again.
And actually, at that point, we have, so now that we kind of like have that yellow light from the city, we've sort of broken up into a couple different areas that we're going to have needs. So one is in fundraising. One is in just getting all of the background training of the logistics of the different companies that are going to be used to be involved. We're also going to arrange the arrivers, right? And like the overall of the day and all of that stuff. So if anybody's interested in being involved in the smaller groups to get those pieces moving, you know, so it's not just this big gig, it's like, let's throw a parade. Now we kind of ask the people to fill, which make it a little more manageable for people who are involved.
Do you have a website for us too?
So there's a, on the Miramesa Champions website, I think there, I don't think it's up yet, but we will have sort of a link once we know a little bit more. And then we'll also have a Google form that people can fill out if they want to be in the parade. We do have the whole Google drive of information from 2019 last time it was put on. So we have sort of all of that historical information. And we're going to make sure to invite all of those people back, different groups and members.
I'm not sure that it's on the town council site too.
We will work together on that. Just a couple quickies. I noticed you mentioned Mesa, Mesa Verde Park. Actually, Mesa Viking Park is next to Erickson. Mesa Verde Park is the one next to Mason Elementary School, which, yeah, right. And so just that, the parade route down Weston Hill, quite historic though because Erickson was the first school, it didn't have a school and houses right by there, but it had a school and houses a few blocks away off of Arlington and off of Buckhurst. And going down Weston Hill, actually past that area, so I love that. I'll never forget your parade group planning because those of you who don't know, Pam Stevens authored Miramesa, the Images of Americas series. We moved here in 1980 and saw a lot of the community grow up around us. But the first 10 years, we found out from neighbors and neighbors that didn't go out and, you know, in a wonderful condition.
Karen, I just wanted to make a point. A lot of people may not realize that the Fourth of July is on Saturday, so there will be a day off of work on the 3rd. I think that helps us this year, whichever way we go with fireworks.
Yeah, it's a good day.
So please, yeah.
And scout, girl scout, boy scout, cup scout, we all need a game of the parade again. We remember that before the COVID, all the scouts paraded together. That's the thing.
I'm sure if my daughter got involved in the competition. I have to run you something.
I have one next to Michael Fenster from the Golden River.
I'm here. There's some interesting news for the community and just get right to it. So you'll start seeing these flyers, restaurants windows, they were the most possible findings hopefully on legal terms. So don't the boom, why does they know that? Because we have been approached by an anonymous neighbor of yours who's going to match dollar for dollar up to $15,000 to get the fireworks funded. So if you made a $5 donation, guess what? It's technically a $10. It's technically a ten dollar donation. You make a hundred dollar donation, you just made a two hundred dollar donation. All combined, that will help us get to our goals. We got our information about what the fireworks will cost. There's two proposals, we do it on July third, it's about, it's a thirty thousand dollar show. We have to put the deposits in regardless on January sixteenth of next year. If you want to do it on the fourth, it will be a fifty thousand dollar show. One good advantage is that we will have five inch shelves. We could have a bigger show than we had for almost nine hundred fireworks on July fourth. Pretty impressive, the last show was six hundred and twenty-two fireworks and only four inch shelves. We can fit four and five inch shelves over there at right behind. That's one of the big advantages of having that nice seven hundred foot square with also a street as more buffer. But, what that means is, please, either take one of these cards and QR code that and pass it off to someone else, please. Remind them, hey, every dollar that you give is actually two dollars to the show. Or you can take this one, same QR code, does the same thing. This great stuff for your friends, your neighbors, get them involved too. We're nothing without funding, but we're really nothing without advocacy. And all I see in here is a lot of folks who can be our advocates to the community. Also with that, you'll find an envelope that's back there. If you really want to step up, this is what we get up to our big sponsors, those who are able to do five thousand, twenty-five hundred, or a thousand dollars. Which I don't expect anyone here to just all of a sudden whip out the five thousand dollars, as much as I would love that. But, what you can do, say you went to a restaurant and you have this in your back pocket. Say, may I leave this with the manager? So that they can possibly become a sponsor of the Scripps Mesa fireworks? Because we're trying to get back to the fourth. And even if we don't get back to the fourth, we still want to have a show. So, please, do what you can, do what you can. And, you know, as I said, everything takes money sometimes, but also it takes advocacy, we really appreciate everyone who has helped us out in the past and those who are going to help us in the future to get this out there. This is, you got the sneak preview, we're announcing this more, you know, social media wise tomorrow, saying, your dollar becomes two dollars with this person making a donation for it. Any questions?
Yeah, we found out, put some of those posters up around Marlins and somebody.
That's a good idea, they have a big stack of those, and it's going to be pretty, please obviously to ask, we don't want them saying, hey, you're not supposed to do that. But pretty much any place that has a window, we're going to try and get those to do that because putting a sign is so much easier than writing a check sometimes, but also that they're thwarted out of profit. So, we need to know by January of next year. Yeah, so based on what we see, what we project is how we're going to determine it's going to be July third and July fourth. Even with, you know, the matching, we haven't quite got to that, but we have about four thousand, forty-five hundred right now. And forty-five hundred dollars is what Scripps Mesa. And so, the lowest deposit is fifteen thousand dollars. So, you can see already, we're ten thousand dollars short to even having that deposit for the smallest show on July. Now, Pat, we've been pushing this. Now, we have a good broad to start, and let's paper it off.
Can I say something, um, just so everybody knows, like, the deposit, if we don't make that, there is no fireworks. Just, just so everybody knows, like, it's not just either the third or the fourth. But if we don't even have that, what, ten thousand?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, then there is no fireworks show. So, support at least that, so that we can have a big show, at least on the third.
This is called Scripps Mesa fireworks, barbecue service. Scripps Ranch had to be involved, community involved at some point in time. But who are you going to?
We reached out to Bob Ilco from the Scripps Ranch Association. And they will pass out some of the information to the companies. And we did get a few donations, we don't get many donations from them because there's not quite the same, there's not a big construction firm doing construction in Scripps Ranch that there is down at Vulcan, so. But we have received some smaller donations from Scripps Ranch Association. But yeah, we're still, there's a full basket.
Oh, I was just going to add, I know some of the history, back in the day, there were big developers in Scripps Ranch. And Martha Miles, some of you know, who used to live in Miramar, now lives in Scripps Ranch, was very active as a volunteer and had entries in both parades and Scripps Mesa fireworks. And so, we would like to make a renewed effort in Scripps Ranch. And I believe you're in the barn this morning?
Yes.
In Scripps Ranch, and that would be an awesome opportunity for Scripps Mesa fireworks to get the word out. Maybe, maybe for some others, we can talk more later. I'm putting on my Scripps Mesa fireworks hat because I am secretary for that day, Vice President for Town Council, current Secretary for Scripps Mesa fireworks.
Okay, what is Scripps Mesa fireworks?
Scripps, no, it is a nonprofit by O one C three program. So, your donations to it are ex deductible. It has a website, you can get to it from scrippssesafireworks.org or miramarcasofireworks.com.
And you guys, as an organization, do you like?
So, we're the organization that fundraises and organizes by going to the pyrotechnics company and giving them a location to do fireworks.
The company that sets off the fireworks is called Pyro Spectacular. So, none of us on the committee are, are known how to do this, set off the fireworks on the sun, watch them. And, and they've been some amazing tours for Girl Scouts the day before the fireworks actually arrive. That might be an opportunity to do.
Is there an address where people can mail such things?
Yes, it's on our website as well.
Just on the little thing?
That's a good question, I don't think you put it on. No, to make sure that the, yeah.
I just think we want those workers to back.
November nineteenth, Jolly Bean will be giving donations for every meal, I think it's twenty percent? It's bringing, Jolly Bean will. Thank you.
Thank you. So, next, to continue the theme of what's going on the Fourth of July weekend of 2026, tying in with the fireworks, Miramar Casino Council does a watch party for the fireworks. Jeff, your own.
Karen, so what I'm thinking this year, it's a lot of fun to do the watch party, it's early about four o'clock. We want to start at nine, we have food trucks, food booths, we have children for kids. We've spent over the last couple of years, we've extended more this year, so, fun, a car show. We had, like, any minutes in British last year, it was a very nice party event. So, I said we had a bigger event this year. So, it'll be even on the third or the fourth, when there's the fireworks start. Our fireworks, we probably won't have that. Either of those, the money in front of either of those days, we'll have a watch party before it. And our last field, whether it's four o'clock.
In the area of our last field, community parks, the whole field scale, it's a community park that's located on campus in Carroll and Howard. And then each year it's been growing and growing. This year, we gather the church, random council area, it is, and that's a lot of that. Looking forward to doing that again. And simply, you can play with the lot, Tom, here, you're up for Miramar Casino, test it this way.
On the back table, food sample. Um, this is the budget for 2028. We have not really changed much, we still have not been able to, um, give our information to do a redoubt, to change our monitors, to be able to do some other things that we want to do. But we did find out that we have enough money to cover some of the smaller items, and that's what we're going to do. So, you'll find that we're adding more appliance to the median, take care of some of the sparseness to it. The network, we'd like to do this, something that has to be done with a network here, via the city, which is going to trip at a cost, and we really want to. We've basically just moved numbers around, it's going to be the same. We're still zone one, which is, we have here zone two, and we have two over here. Zone three, black house, we're very contained, a hundred and, uh, there. There are a hundred and sixty-two, eighty-one for the year. Uh, where the rest of the two, three, the building ones too, will be paying immediately eighteen dollars and fifty-four cents a year. We've run into a lot of complaints about wanting to do it because it's an exit cost, but they can't afford eighteen dollars a year. We want to do more with Miramar Casino. We're, we're going to try and get this onto a website where people will be able to see. Jeff is going to help us create that, he doesn't know yet. And give it up on a website where we can show what we want to do, how much it's going to cost, and how we're going to get to it. Uh, but it's, it'll be more visible than me standing here talking to you. And you'll be able to see what's going on. We need to get everybody on board because it's close to a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do a redoubt, and I don't want to get it wrong. So, I keep that in mind because it utilizes within our programs. So, but anyway, that's basically it. You're still paying less than nineteen dollars. The city, zone three, is only because they want more, a lot more work done on the hill. And that is the reason for that. I will say this. For everyone who wants to, they have a bad cover. They have, they have all the numbers. Talk about, or what we have. We gave in, it was. One million seven hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars are expenses. All right. That was the, we get, uh, revenue, and one million two hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred, six hundred five dollars. So, we're losing a little bit there for increases, but we still have the funds. Our goal is to maintain a ten percent, which is eight hundred ten thousand ninety dollars with a maximum for a six month calendar of one thousand.
What do you think, Jeff? Can you be, is this group, the assessment thing, is it a separate entity? Is it an office? Is it part of the city government?
No, we are, we are.
It's a self-commissioned town council, but the town council does not access any of that. We don't access any of that ourselves. We vote on the budget, right? I'm just curious as to how.
Yeah, and the, uh, one of the, that's pretty, that's, uh, to the higher, you know. So, we gotta stay within that budget, and we, we, the city will be obvious. And I don't think you want the city, I mean, it's not, it's really, uh, big for the city. Anyway, we have another group meetings in the, we.
So, there's a one million dollar.
What was that? Yeah, we have, we use, the, 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 sorry, I'm not, Joe, do you explain the E U?
It depends on how many houses there are in the city, probably. So, but, everybody in Miramar Casino basically pays eighteen dollars and fifty-four cents a year.
That's on the property tax bill.
Yes.
That's on the, on the property stuff.
So, it also doesn't, that's another problem.
Well, it, it doesn't really crash, it don't.
But what we do is we do the mediums, we maintain them, keep them clean. Here, we'll try to, we're, uh, take some of the logistics, what the size of the, the, the dry, uh, trim and, so. So, we find ways of, uh, littering in there.
Well, that's important.
That's true.
That's one of the long areas of the town, uh, of the town, too.
We're still, we're still trying, trying to get a little, a target on the, uh, Calvin Bridge over here on the, and then having the military come down and see how well we can spot it. But, uh, for example, maybe we could take it.
I hope that could cut me home with this, Brian, with the, being responsible for the media. I would love to see some kind of reflective stuff painted on it, with a blank, sometimes a knife, and where, you know, pick that, because it's hard to see. So, if there are like a yellow reflective, then, I think I saw one at the ranch, are you?
That's something you can do, get the.
Okay, so you would be wanting something like.
We can, we've been talking about it.
Oh, really?
Uh, it's, uh, on our, there's things we need to do, but if you want to add faster, get the, get it done, it's a site.
Make the city pay.
See, that's the only way.
Your right works.
It's the only way. But as far as putting up, uh, illumination devices that.
Boy, we just got to be, you know, so you can see.
Reflective, right?
You're saying, because it's a little point, you know?
Or if the point goes, you're right, when you're driving along, you know? But I'm, I'm stopped, I'm in a turn, you're, you're something, something we're clearly thinking for this. I haven't done it yet, but I'm, 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 I just. Get it done to rest, Ben.
Okay. So, will you come back for us at the December meeting?
Is everybody coming back, your podcast, discuss if you have any questions? This will be posted on the website, the town council. And there you'll have a chance to look at it, review it, come up with any questions. And if you really need to find out what it is, you can contact me directly.
And what are your meetings for meetings?
Our meetings are the first Tuesday of every month.
First Tuesday?
At Old Yes Bridge, at five o'clock.
You check into the numbers.
Five.
You have no Veterans Day?
No, we have a lot of, we have a meeting today.
Oh, you're all, you're all ready, we, 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 right, right.
That probably would be there.
Okay, well, very good. Thanks a lot, we do have a few other things on the agenda that I don't want to let you off. And that was informative and headcounty, because as Karen said, our December meeting is mostly an end of year holiday party celebration. As Mary said, our December meeting is mostly an end-of-year holiday party celebration. And everything we've done, I, I will be contacting the oral groups of Mary Mesa High again to see if they can end the game. But this is an important piece of business that members of Mayor Mesa Town Council vote on the budget. What the man will be getting with his money, and so we have that input, even though it's something that's money that's collected from everyone in the community, used for everyone in the community, that benefits from those programs. So it's our input that's being given, and town council members will have a chance to do that business at the December meeting. And with that, that segue's to the next item on our agenda. The election for the members of the board that are serving from twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-seven. There are current board members whose positions have expired, some running for reelection, some not. I'll turn the meeting over to Eric, who is the nominee committee chair. He's a parliamentarian, he's coming on, Eric.
If I mention on the air, I'm a parliamentarian. As parliamentarian, one of the duties is to, uh, come up with a, um, ballots. So, I don't know if we'll need these. Because we do have people on the ballot, and I don't know if anybody has been sitting here thinking, I would really like to be one of the, uh, board of directors. There are six positions, um, up for reelection. President, the second vice president, which is, um, in charge of membership. Secretary, parliamentarian, director of large one, and director of large two. Does anybody want to, uh, does anyone want those positions?
More. Well, you want to introduce the candidates, the nominees? You talked about.
What's that?
We can't see. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, those are the positions that are open. Anybody is allowed to be a candidate for them. Oh, currently, currently.
Yeah, currently, no, no, Shane will stand up. Yes.
We're, we're, we're checking to see if, if anybody else would like to. Would you like to run for one of those positions?
No, I just want to sit there.
Yeah, so, so I'm just making sure where, like, you would want to have a competitive democratic election. So, we, we did as a nominating committee, myself, Cam, uh, Barry.
Barry needed to get back to work. She just, I'm honored to be here. Thank goodness, I, yeah, we'll help this year.
So, we, we kind of just got mostly Cam because she knows everyone. Who, trying to find some people to fill these, uh, positions. So with.
Do you have candidates?
We do have candidates.
We do, but it's only one candidate per position.
Our nominee.
It's not very competitive right now. And, you know, if you like competition. So Barry was, he was. Now, she mentioned earlier, she was not going to be running for reelection, for reelection, but Shane here graciously jumped out. I don't know if her, I haven't had the.
I got lower taxes.
Low, yeah, no new taxes, right? Shane has been serving as our director of large two positions for this past year.
Yeah, it's been a year and a half. Yeah, yeah. Um, it's been like almost two years. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, some of you know me, most of you don't. Uh, I'm Shane O'Garrow. I've been on the board for a year and a half. Uh, my special project was homelessness, and so I was making sure we had all the numbers for homelessness and what we could do, uh, with that. And as president, I'm looking to, and I'm already working with some other organizations about doing more with homelessness in Marisah, uh, as well as doing a whole lot of other things. So, yeah. Uh, any questions?
So he is our only candidate running for president. Our second vice president for membership was, um, Jacob. And Kimmy, I guess, that she will step into that role.
Stand up.
Did you want to say anything? No. Being in charge of membership, maybe.
Yes.
Send it here. Recruit some more members.
Uh, yeah, pretty much just kind of want to support the community. Um, we, we need to develop some more, um, business community in our community, um, and support our small businesses and bring great things to the community.
And you're a small business owner?
I am, I am Kimmy Williams. Yes, I own, um, Aloha Sense, shop in the Marisah Mall. Um, been there for three and a half years, um, been in the business for almost eight years. Um, I've been a member with, um, Marisah Chain, uh, Town Council for a long time, um, almost, what, eight years? And, um, I'm ready to step up, so, yeah.
Uh, this is Hector Berry, uh, was Jeff Stevens, and if.
I'm not sure.
No one else seems to want to take this.
I've been a member of the town council since nineteen eighty-one. On the board of the, during that time, I held every board position except for one board wars.
Uh, the fourth one, parliamentarian, myself, and nobody else. Um, I, I, I remember someone moving in Marisah, but then, um, showing up to one of the meetings and then just killed. And showed up like once, and the next one showed up, and then somebody on the nominating committee said, well, if you're showing up to the public meeting.
And the rest is history. Eric is also a very capable chair of our scholarship.
Director at large one, Yvonne, she's my.
No, not tonight, I guess.
But she is going to stay in that position as well. Uh, director of large two, Shane.
Oh, and the last one.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Okay, just to not leave anybody out, there are five other positions. So, the six are, where are we going, twenty-five are in the hot years, and the other five are in the even years. So, still serving out the remaining other term, the first vice president, which is for the programs, and treasurer, Jonathan, and then newsletter editor, not years.
Jameer, he and his mom, Hunchen, are still in India. They have been contributing from India. They've been attending board meetings, which we do by Zoom. Not every month, but Hunchen attends fairly frequently, and they correspond by email. So, our newsletter, Jameer has been doing a first draft every month, and then sometimes last year, which Jeff and I have been working on. Uh, Hunchen says they are joining.
The director of our three.
Right, back in Maranisa by the end of this year. He'd be loving to get out from that, so, question is.
And then the last director of our four position, Aida.
The Aida, Pam Po, she kind of had her meeting, they said she couldn't make it to the maximum. She also is very active. She helped me organize that business expo that we did at the office meeting, which we have in the Maranisa Senior Center, slightly bigger room than this, and we've got tables right at the edge of the room for all the businesses.
So, let's round out that studio.
I'm looking for a personal, personal way.
Oh, okay, so somebody.
Do you want us to learn about the treasurer or your senior?
If you're interested, maybe you just want to get a feel of it, you know, the town council or volunteer, um, we can just show you right in.
Well, thank you so much, Eric. I think I wanted to brush you, brush you a little down on what you've got to do to keep this kind of quality of course that we need to get to before the end of the meeting, so. Well, I love that this was something that you just were finally announced with the map of the election business. The project board, supposed to be stepping down, or changing positions, uh, in which will, that, that there is a crossover meeting, either all together or individually, uh, as, as needed, that will plan, it doesn't have to be a meeting sometime in November, December. The new board gets sworn in at the January meeting. So, those of us that are continuing, and those that are moving their positions, will have, can be kind of, sort of, formal square agenda, if you like, say, at the January meeting. So, okay, so back to the next agenda, open forum.
Are we going to go into the talk, or are we talking to the sign?
Well, how does I initiate the segment? I, I do know that, uh, I'll assume that, um, so we've got, well, actually, we do have Jeff Passy from the Springsman Farmers Market. You might be able to speak a little bit about what Farmers Market is altogether, so. Jeff, good, you gave me stand up to speak for a few minutes.
I was also interested, or maybe next week, we brought one. I was interested in, um, I never could figure out why there's small scripts, maybe some writers. Um, whatever, because I'm in script ranch, but I've never heard of advertising in script ranch or this. So, it's like, okay, well, we need to get this going here, in both directions, because we have lots of stuff going too. But I want to clear up something about the parade thing. I don't think that they were giving less attention to Maranisa. I think what they were doing is, I know the people that do the parade in script ranch, and they sign up for it the day after the Fourth of July, for the following year. So, it's not that you're, it's like, it's just those same people are going over and over, and that the, you know, the, the police and everything are spread thin, but it isn't because you're getting less attention than, you know, whatever else, the other communities, that, that's not at all. Um, but I just want to say, um, my husband and I own the Farmers Market, and it's really, we changed the name of it after we, our grand opening for this Farmers Market was the day, first day that you can walk outside of Valnax. And that was our grand opening. I, prior to that, um, uh, the Sandy High Unified School District sold land out from underneath, where the first one was that I started, um, and I ran out for seventeen years. And then we got the boot. Now, there's a beautiful four-story apartment complex, where the school got kicked out and I got picked out. So, we were retired for two years, and we decided to start over. We were given the opportunity to start over in the, uh, Utopia Side Brewery Parking Lot. We got invited all of you to come work open every single Thursday. Um, I don't know what happened to the Farmers Market here. Um, I, I, the last time I looked at it, there was only like, San Margi Genders, that was it. Um, at one point, it was really big. Um, when I first started my market, um, they started maybe a year or two after me, and they took up practically that whole block coming in. I know we got the boot because of the money was going for the Christian streets and for the home and the couch and all that kind of stuff, and I know that's a hassle, but, um, I, if, if you don't have a Farmers Market, you're pretty lucky having. It's like, we have a ton of people coming to our Farmers Market. We are directly across the hurricane and bridge. So, you, the people that live in all these apartments right there, all they do is walk across the bridge, and they're with us every Thursday. So, it really is a fun place to be.
What is the hours there?
Seven thirty, nine thirty. The only two days that were, uh, only one day that were closed every year is one on Thursday, um, is, um,
Repeat the time.
Thanksgiving, um, and the other one this year is Christmas.
Repeat the time.
Okay, so you're actually, you're what?
Repeat the time, please.
The, oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, seven thirty to nine thirty. Seven thirty to nine thirty. Three thirty to seven thirty. Oh, yeah.
That was very confusing.
Okay, over three thirty to seven thirty. Um, and we're everybody year round. And it's, we, like I said, we started out as a Farmers Market, and they had a lot of farmers, but during COVID, we lost them. Um, uh, even after COVID, when you could still walk out without a mask, our farmers were still leaving in way that they're states. And so, we ended up with three of the best farmers you could ever ask for. They're fantastic. They've shaped, would be through pick and pin. So, they have the eggs, and the produce, and the citrus, and the local honey, and everything that you need. Um, but we mostly have a lot of bakeries and food foods. So, we have food from around the world, like everybody can, uh, this person's been a Guinean Filipino, um, uh, baker or chef. He's trying really, really hard to put Michelin in front of his date, uh, because he wants to open his own business. And so, he's not just concept, you know, he has, like, all the regular Filipino vendors. Um, I grew up with Filipino food, but he's, he's like, already does everything. So, he's coming in, but we have, um, we have about sixty vendors when we're maxing out. And, um, we have like thirty hot food vendors, you know, and pretty, well, bakeries and hot food vendors all together. So, we're more, we're more of a family festival. So, we actually changed our name to the Script Ranch Farmers Market and the Family Festival. I came here because I have so many wonderful vendors, and it's like, I'm gonna give a bunch of them to Kevin, because it's like, I didn't know that you were doing another one of those things again. I came to the little thing that she did over in the parking lot of the now, where it was a rental.
Maranisa artists.
And I told her too. I said, oh, let's go over there, tell them a little thing, you know, we'll just go there and we'll get some of the needed appetites or something. That's my new place, David, by the way. But, um, yeah, good to be able to know you. But, um, uh, the, um, I was so young. I mean, she has some really good stuff there. That was really, she's an excellent organizer, really excellent organizer. But I'm, I'm gonna be dealing with you, we're gonna go ahead.
But I thought maybe I could.
You can have a member first.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, if, if I had to somehow.
We bring my, yeah, right. I, I hate to cut you off, but you have a few more.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Well, thank you, the thing to remember are, I work right after I'm here. It's the, it's the Utopia Side or Parking Lot, as you're rolling over from the Springsman, so we go past the Prager Cleaners and.
I just want to pitch the Farmers Market, that, and then one of those.
Right, so thank you. Uh, is Peter Rain still here so far? Peter Rain is a Maranisa business who regularly is at Farmers Market, right?
Yes, yes, we're very, very close.
Awesome. Okay, we thank you much. Okay, well, let's get going. Uh, the next open forum I have is, um, Liz, the license, your license. Yes, Amanda.
Hey, so you didn't tell me Liz, uh, my name is Zech, actually. Uh, and I just wanted to help you guys a little bit about the community events that we're having here at the Maranisa College Library coming out every couple weeks. Um, my program is called the Community Law Project, and we're a program of California Western School Law. Our students actually do reasonable kinds of positions that I was sending to Kevin. In this turnaround, we partnered with AARP and Council President, Dr. M. S. D. Uh, to bring us a presentation on estate planning and how to actually. The presentation is printed and opened in the public. It will be placed, um, Thursday, November 11th, at 9:00 AM here in the Rose Bowl, right? So, this is something that's been used to manage, or no, probably never coming to be used to manage. I mean, the left and the right, it's the best. Um, and some of our partners work very hard on this project. Thank you. Is that 9:45 AM to 11:00 AM or 12:00 AM?
From 9:45 AM to 11:00 AM, and it's free, you should have to scan your hands. Oh, yeah. Um, and then we have, uh, Christina Ray, also is coming in.
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions, I don't know if it was known, and if we have any info. The non-Tesla electric car charging in the Target parking lot is all gone. No signs, no information wise, disappeared last weekend. And I don't hope they're being fixed, or they're coming back. So, it was quite a disappointment, because the one area that people don't have Teslas can charge.
I don't know the answer, does anybody else have the answer?
I don't know, is that the one, um?
Right near the, the eighty-five degrees.
Eighty degrees.
Okay, I know, I know they have an EV goal at the, uh.
So, it, it's charge point was the vendor, but these were free for an hour.
Oh.
And my understanding, whether it was Target or someone who was making available Tesla, because they had twenty-five of them, and they let the rest of the EV drivers have a couple, but they just disappeared. And it's a loss, and there's no information, so.
Right.
Curious to know about that.
Curious about that.
I didn't even know, it was supposed to be, wow, I would love to have that.
Yeah, no, it was a great, it was a great move. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to bring up, I don't know if anyone here was a member of the Being Fit Gym on the backside here of the mall. Unfortunately, Bricksmore decided to end their lease, they've been there since nineteen ninety-four.
Yeah.
And so, the fitness center and then the nail salon right next door, both had their leases canceled.
Yeah.
With minimal notice, the business got a month, which was legally required. And just a big loss, because they were the only sort of affordable recreation fitness facility for non-Maranisa college affiliated folks in the neighborhood.
There are also other things in that one.
Yeah, but that was not because of the company, that was because of Bricksmore. So, I just, it's done, they're closed now, but it's just kind of a unfortunate situation, and I don't know if it will be fitness, but then in the new Red Center, there's a nail salon, kind of the fine pet smart of the pet coat.
Yeah.
Uh, and then Being Fit Fitness Center on the back there, so.
There was two exercise classes that they moved to Maranisa.
Okay.
Off Maranisa Road.
Okay.
I had a text message, I contributed information.
The gym was more interesting to my husband and I, but it was just, it's unfortunate that Bricksmore decided to close it. It was a single community for.
There's another, a lot of time in.
Something must be going in there.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to ask about the chargers, and what are coming in, if I can lobby on that?
Let me ask also, I was, there was not a sign on the open forum list from, like, anyone from, was it the bowling alley here? Somebody you could, that contacted you earlier?
Can I suggest that we come to, um, you didn't see what.
Yeah, right, okay, so there isn't anybody from the bowling alley here, is there? Because we have heard that the community rumbles that that might also be being affected by upcoming, you know, that is rumor state right now.
We're gonna have an excuse.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that on. Moving on, from the open forum, and we're moving into elected officials, community groups, and then TC committees that have not already reported. Uh, is Sabrina Bosso here? I don't think that Bosso's here. And I have, I know that Marjorie McEnton from the Sandy High Community College District Board is here. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. I represent, uh, Maranisa City and Maranisa College, as well as eight continuing operations. So, the biggest thing happening is we approved, um, because of the AH bond last year that Sandy High approved, we are making, we're building a new building. So, Maranisa is going to get a sixty-four thousand square foot building right there up front, and it's going to be built right at the front of the, of the school. And it will be a professional art center, and it will house paintbrush, as well as the alley park. We are also building a new hangar at McEnton, that will house our aviation program. Um, in Holland, we're good, even last year, we're currently, I had done this thirteen thousand seven hundred eight percent Maranisa, cost our district about forty-nine thousand by hundred. So, it's very, kind of a budget allocation that was more than all we had this year. So, we're doing well. Um, in seven, we have many in choir choir. We hope we have a graduation of our next choir choir meeting class for our family on December nineteenth, and your home life.
Thank you, December the thirteenth. Okay, and moving on, that's two days. For me, it's three months of Maranisa, that's three days. I'm.
Hi, everyone, my name is Emma Serrano with Tom's number lease office. I have sort of a short update. Um, I'm not sure if I was in the head of my school, I believe I wasn't, but for soft part, we're having a new substantial completion timeframe, which is May twenty-sixth, with our time establishment period. And I think the finances to that, there's kind of a scheme, like, we're going to receive the dock part to be released before that, but there's still a confirmation of that. And then for the Maranisa community part, Eric, we're halfway done. Um, Cam and Chad and some other, um, community leaders were able to come in this quarter last week, and it was really kind of, you see everything, pretty much like, just tangible, like, a fighting contest, it goes to the pool. Um, so I, I'm not, I don't, I don't know if they want to share what they have on their own reports, but it's going well, they're working on the paradise, so if I go on to see people, it's going to be fun. But I really have a pretty copy, because I'm a little sick. And then I invite these two today to build a wall, and then we'll be having here, like, a community library room, or if you're planning. And inside them, we'll be having our, right, the one that we have every year, and if you register, we'll be able to send you the location, I have some plans in the back. Sunday November twenty-third. Thirty-sixth.
Okay. And then, but that's the box, we need to say, that's all.
Salt is spring twenty-sixth.
Spring.
Spring.
This is the law, it's going to be a third one. So, oh, no, I want to know that name.
One question, um, are there any more high-rise buildings that you need to be gathering this year?
In this area of evening, um, I've been shy, but sometimes, or the older, or, uh, maybe you get in the night, quite often, times. Um, I don't think so, really, this area, maybe in Maranisa, but that's, it's what I'm, I'm going to play around, uh, but not directly.
So, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just. I think that's what it would not take for a lot of people to be sure. Because I have a wide, wide, I have always a certified, in order to spirit, with the Lord.
They didn't partner with any friends.
When you're ready to talk, they'll all be on the transgressors, most people say. That all is there, you know.
If you, if you can see, I don't know if you know, the, the timeline of the year, if like, that it happens.
I've heard, it's all about. Okay, okay, okay.
It's just, it's a long time.
Hockey was really good. You're working on, but I mean, I, I, it's quite old, Scott, I bet you. Because I've met, uh, I'm a kid, because I'm not drawn to sports. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Well, thank you so much. I want to double check that I got the time right for that state planning, September fifteenth, number four. Nine forty-five AM to twelve AM. And that's free, do you need to register and dance with this wall?
Anyone, I'm a little bit impressed, and it's a wall.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, everybody, to you, to you, for your support. Oh, thank you. Um, to those to the board, um, for Maranisa State Fair, they will, uh, uh, roll, roll my baby around, and we had a great time, so. Um, I have three name updates, all this is written down, and in charge of Jack, uh, for distribution. Uh, the first is in December, the council is going to be holding their annual review of automated, uh, placate reader technology. And it's really important, and I wanted to highlight that tonight. Um, I think we've heard about some, uh, statutory of the SCP, and this is a very important tool that they have to kind of get them away from the desk, um, or kind of figure it around, and calling, uh, different, uh, types. So, since the program was initiated in December twenty-two-three, automated like placate readers have led to over four hundred and twenty arrests, reported three hundred notifications, recovered over five million stolen property, and have also recovered, uh, over four hundred and forty stolen vehicles. Um, so as part of the annual surveillance report, uh, process under the trust ordinance, um, and part of the latest, uh, budget adoption, uh, the continued use of this technology is, um, continue to be on the approval of, uh, the annual report. So, that's coming to city council. Um, I know there is, that is a very critical safety group, and we took issue with the floor, um, continuing to allow that type of technology. Um, was that the planning meeting in September, that was the same night that city council was voting on, um, uh, pay parking for Babol Park? So, they did direct, um, mayor staff and urban appreciation staff to come up with rates that vary from residents and non-residents. Um, and also, um, we discovered that we need to revise our special event pricing, and they're, um, using that public credit rate, um, to make revenue. So, those two revisions are going back to the Babol Park Committee, um, this Wednesday. If anybody's interested at four AM at the Senate table, um, at Babol Park.
What about the, uh, parking, that they're, they're offering, um, vendors or volunteers free parking, or? Because, uh, I am, uh, I have about thirty-eight organizations under, under me that have anywhere from thirty to, um, hundred fifty to hundred, uh, miller's. It should have, must have about three thousand, uh, volunteers, uh, that we use throughout the year. Um, and they're not necessarily the city residents of the county, but not necessarily the city area. How's that going to be handled?
Um, so there's been some allocation for staff, but not for volunteers. Um, so, the, the latest rates will be, um, presented at the meeting, following the meeting, and with the additional community input, there will be a fact sheet that I can pass around. But currently, uh, it's an allocation for staff, but not for volunteers, so.
Then we're gonna have an issue, because you're gonna lose a lot of planning capital.
Right.
Because we're not gonna have, we're not gonna have the events that people are gonna put on.
Understood.
You're not gonna, you're gonna lose, what's the rate, it'll be two fifty?
I have one more item I want to report, and then I can, I can chat with you offline further, or if you can attend the meeting, that would be a better idea. Perfect. Um, the last update I have, um, I also mentioned at the planning group meeting, and it's the city's first ever community recreation needs assessment. Um, there's a survey currently available, be encouraged, everybody, to take it. Um, Jeff asked, you know, the community has surveyed the T question, takes another survey about input. Well, with the cost of money, we've got it as a better indication. Um, the reason that Joe gets upset all the time, that we come to, we, we often will have to make the first touch towards library and parking recreation. Um, usually that's because there's no legal obligations tied to which that, you know, resources. So, within the pot of money that is remaining for parking recreation, um, Mayor really does want to focus on, for reasons of existing, um, infrastructure, how can we improve it rather than helping more and more new parks? I know Maranisa wants to have additional park space, and so, as we have a limited pot, this assessment helps us better understand what everyone is wanting to see in the various, uh. It's though, but, well, the planning department is, is, is getting these, which are, it doesn't mean that, that mayors can't propose, like, we still want to rent parks, but a lot of mayors already do have a lot of parks, so it's not an opportunity to have a little, even for the community, that was funny parts. Um, so, there's a survey, there's a town hall. The town hall is on November twenty-one at six AM at Hourglass Shield. Um, and then there's a police group, so it's a couple of community leaders have been contacted, uh, city parks cannot police group. So, more information, we might have to.
Can you get more money for the state park infrastructure? Would you pay like a dollar for that, for the, for the tax?
Yeah, it's not quite enough, it's, we have, it's not enough for the infrastructure, and you can't be had. So, it does come back, but kind of, we need to bring all the, other things to mind.
Okay, we're focused on, um, the, um, the, 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 you know, the, you know, the, you know, the.
Um, I was last told that the state was going to be having, um, we had a discussion about adding, uh, parking and road, being a road, and, uh, I know the state designer applications for that. Um, it, it really varies, because we all go into an, uh.
All, all around, yeah, just. Thank you so much, I understand a little bit of, uh, I wonder how we follow that up more, thanks a lot. Quite as late as the plumb, but the plumb is not here. All of that. Okay, the next conversation, that's all Maranisa's, we were emailing, it's, I'm just, I'm already, we can't, we can't see that with Jeff's letters. State Senator Brian Jones, the address is on Martin's Avenue, okay? Don't see Mark, okay? State Assembly Member Chris Ward, we heard from the Assembly Member earlier himself, is Michael Waddle still here? Not hit for the court, darn for it. Congresswoman Sarah Jacobs, is Imani here? And Imani, Maranisa community, I'm here, Jeff Stevens.
Okay, so, um, one group is a third hundred each, each month. After our last meeting, we had a presentation. Uh, for our last meeting, we had a presentation by, um, we're developing a lot of pre-works, just to help them in that project. He says, the housing involved is sold out. They are having some difficulty though finding a buyer for the commercial part of the project. And they're also about to start development of a new, um, public community park that's going to be named for a long time, Marimba's volunteer Bruce Brown. Also, they approved initiative use permit for a wireless communications facility that's located on the building next to the post office. At our next meeting, we're going to be doing a commission use permit for a twenty-four hour fitness center that will be built in the former right location. Questions?
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see, so then ask for the, 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 the Marimba's Community Recreation Group, Joe.
Joe, we. I guess we, uh. Senator Mike, because next Tuesday is, uh, Veterans Day, we cast RV. I haven't, um, please fill out that survey, you get it online, you can see, you can send it to the city council and you'll find it. So that calls marketing, planning, parks. And instead, page two is going great, because it hasn't been raining. So I think it was two years behind schedule. Time we have is, I'm glad next year. Page two should be done sometime in the summer of next year. That's about it.
Sounds good. For those who are not, those of us who are, because we used to be part, the caterpillar is in the. So if anybody remembers the long time caterpillar, it's that pressure code made and it's there and we provide filling, right? So we watch it, we love it, it's another really, like, uh, kind of side of the operation. Okay, moving along.
I would, yes, yeah, we usually take a lot of those, um, surveys and leave them out on the, the web, okay, some pages and stuff, can you?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what we're saying. Um, moving along, is treasure this sport? Oh, there was a library, I don't know. He's a quick, the library calendar on the back table, so if we take a look at the calendar, Jeff also had that on his. Now it's pretty good. John, John.
Okay, uh, we finished our, uh, street fair, so the street fair area was about thirty-eight thousand and, uh, sponsored by four thousand. And we got the ten thousand dollar grant from the city, uh, this year, the next year, we did, so that's probably. Census is about thirty-two thousand, so you take the thirty-eight, uh, thirty-two, and about the six thousand on the income census and another four thousand or, or the grant, so that's pretty good. Uh, let's see, emergency, six hundred to four and, uh, police census, uh, chairman's credit. So we charted a year of eighty-three thousand and we, right now, we're plus eight thousands or like that and one thousand, so that's pretty good. Party center. Good work, we get more, we need to get more, we need to receive some more donations for the staff. Any questions? Yes?
Okay. So there was a lot of talk about the parade needing money and the fireworks needing money and you guys are doing, uh, what are we calling it, please?
Big party.
Oh, yeah, flash party, flash party. Okay, so how does that fit into your budget here? How are you guys looking for putting that on?
The fourth of July last year cost about seven thousand dollars.
We need almost everything in that. So yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
We have, we have enough money, we can, we can, we can, we can start with vendors, so that the light after this thing will work even. Yeah, we should be.
So, well, it's, yeah, we still like subsidizing that because we don't want people who aren't going to fireworks at exactly the same time and now parade is starting up and it's not our, it's another community, and we, we need to raise money for it, so we have thought of that.
Not only for our, but for the parade also, and that, we really want, I think that corporate information is all about the fireworks effects. As the toughest one we ever, uh, money. They tend to have first priority of like, they want to have a good, but that doesn't make it easy to do.
Okay, we're wrapping up tonight's meeting. I have, oh, there's one more question, sorry. Yes.
I think, um, this year's, uh, street fair is the biggest one we have to make because there's too much, uh, people in this year. As far as maybe, um, can it equal traffic and maybe, uh, vendors that participated?
So we had, um, what's it, a hundred and, a hundred and thirty vendors, I think. That's the only street ever, ever happened. This is not very.
Yeah.
Our traffic seems to be.
No, it's, it's, we never had, I mean, I can't, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, well, you're taking, taking attendance, so it's always a yes. Yeah, this can be.
It was an exciting day, went by the glare for those of us working, like, who are that, very good. Okay, that's a good question. Membership, I mean, I know we pledged to, and even I had a few, Kenny, I was sitting back there. Did you, like, gather any memberships tonight or?
Uh, potential.
Potential, awesome, awesome. Well, everybody who is a friend of the unique community, website is open, but if you'd like to, um, go ahead and do that on your way out, you can see Kenny on the way out. And then after, I'm sure, we have the scouts that are going to be meeting with a few of us board members up front, I think. I, is that what, uh, I understand, I, I believe so, so we'll stick around for a little bit to do that. But before I have to all go, I'll just say one more report about another event that just happened. The Marimba's High School Home Field Tournament and the Color Guard Tournament was amazing. Jeff and I were able to attend, watched the last two revisions of a really large fans, and then we presented the trophy that Marimba's and town council sponsored. Town council, the past few years, has sponsored a music soup stage of the trophy, which is named the Leonard Wolf Trophy in honor and memory of, of the house captain, the middle schooler, uh, and, and choir teacher also. Wow, and he was an admirable individual. Our younger brother Sharon, when she was in middle school, a challenger, he was, was one of the students, and very inspirational, so that was a fabulous experience to be there. For those of you who are new to this, she's retired from teaching, because they're out there out volunteering along with the, the current band of Redberry. All schools there, great job, so the trophy was awarded to Elder Brown, which had, they were running, alas, really good ones. Marimba's does not win a trophy at its own turn, that may go for four, so you watch that, a lot of fun, so on that note, meeting adjourned.